Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah.
Would you please stand to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, resolutions? I need a motion to approve the job and family services bills for payment.
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes. I have exception to number two of four. We're making appropriation. It's on Justice Center carpeting for $388,000. We're appropriating the money already. I guess we're voting also into requisitions too, so...
Betty, Betty, Betty.
Yep, thanks. So, I have exception to using that kind of money for the Justice Center. That could buy us another ten playgrounds in this community. Guess maybe some, I think it could be used for better uses than the Justice Center. But that's all.
And Commissioners, before you vote, I have an additional appropriation here. We had a weakness in one of our accounts to purchase checks to pay vendors with. We need to put additional funding in there. Mr. Roca, he's done an evaluation of that account and looked at the request of the Audit Office and we absolutely need to purchase these checks. This is some of the budget issues that we dealt with early in the year and there's a bit of a weakness there. So if you would please appropriate that funding to cover those vendor checks, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
That's number five of five.
Thanks. Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Just on that.
Yeah, no one wants.
Okay. Got transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments this morning. Requisitions?
So moved. I'll second with the exception of number three seventeen through number three twenty. It's Clemmons and Nelsons.
It's three seventeen Clemmons and Nelsons also?
Three seventeen always three twenty.
Okay. Oh, okay.
More discussion?
Yeah, I have exceptions to number three five one and three five two. Once again, that's $388,000 of used recycled waste material for a Justice Center and $6,500 for the Sheriff's Department for carpeting at the Sheriff's Department using recycled funds for that. So I make exception to that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye with no exceptions.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye with the noted exceptions.
Mr. Moore?
I with my exception. Thank you.
Charlamagne Spences?
So moved with exception one forty-one.
Second with the same exception.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. I assume that one forty-one was taken out of the motion in the second, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Approving bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I'd authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Second.
Discussion?
There was only one on there.
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Audit Department, I'm number ten. Need to advertise for bids for the purchase of one 2003 SUV midsize compact sport utility vehicle. Account number, the said vehicle will be paid from, will be the Real Estate Assessment Fund. And this is incorrect, it should be turned around, it should be number two one five zero one dash zero three zero one dash four five zero one two five. Bills will be received until Tuesday, March eighteenth, 2003, at 2:30 PM. Like to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on March fourth and eleventh, 2003.
I'll move for discussion.
For discussion?
For discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion?
Okay, where's the discussion, Jim?
Let my people go. We, currently, we're loaning them a fleet vehicle. I understand that there's, their van has seen the full extent of its service life and it's on its last leg. Some months ago, it broke down and they were having it repaired and we loaned one of our lesser desirable fleet vehicles and on a continuing basis and they're still using it. The funding to purchase a vehicle would be coming from our Real Estate Assessment Funds, not out of the General Fund. I, without deciding or trying to participate in decision what kind of vehicle they should have, I think that they need a vehicle. So I hope that discussion is what you're looking for.
Okay. So I will move to approve.
Oh, I, was it, you just moved for discussion? That's what we had?
Well, okay, let's vote on that.
Well, no, I want to ask where we're going, okay? I just have this comment. I spoke to Yvonne Newton this morning in the Purchasing Department. This department can get a Windstar off the state purchasing list for $16,300 with no options. I'm not sure why they have asked for this type of a vehicle. And the vehicle that they've asked for here, a midsize compact, is not currently on the state purchasing list. So the only comment that Yvonne made was that this would give us an opportunity to deal with a local vendor.
Well, it may give us an opportunity to deal with a local vendor, but, well, have we, we've done this before, right?
Yes, many, lots of years ago, we did.
We use the spec list?
Yeah, what we did was, we took generic specs and basically took it from there and...
Didn't we, wasn't the vehicle already specced and priced on the state list, but it wasn't available and we used their materials to get a matching price from local dealers?
Oh, when we did that, none of the vehicles, we had done that for the Veteran Services to see if they could match the prices and know that none of the dealerships around here could match that state purchasing price. And plus, there were no more 2,002 vehicles at that time for us to get for the Veterans Department.
Okay.
Excuse me, the auditor is here. Mr. Stewart, would you like to comment on this issue?
Not really. We do need a vehicle.
I think the question is the type of vehicle.
I think the type of vehicle we would like to purchase is a small SUV and we think the Ford Escape is the best vehicle. And I think these, these specs will help support, and we have plenty of vendors locally that could bid on this job, so we think it's the best.
This is going to go out for bid, so it will give the opportunity for local bidders.
Correct. We have plenty of new Ford dealerships that could bid on this car, so I think the taxpayers would be well served.
But it's not exclusive to Ford?
No, it isn't.
Okay. I guess the question mark was why you were asking for this type of a vehicle as opposed to the Windstar. And I think you have a van now, do you not? I mean, minivan for your department?
Yeah, and it has to have a better towing capacity. And we need a heavy duty because they carry weights, extremely heavy weights, for the weights and measure department. And it has to have a good towing capacity, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Under Commissioners, item number eleven, need to adopt the changes to the Lorraine County Driver Vehicle Risk Reduction Program effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Item number twelve, need to amend Resolution number zero two dash six twenty-nine as a housekeeping matter by deleting the third paragraph in its entirety and replace with the following. Whereas the county understands that the Port plans to issue up to $1,245,000 in maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of, I, acquisition, construction, and equipment of a facility to be used as a headquarters and office building for the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau Incorporated, and two, through the payment of the costs of issuance related thereto.
Also moved. Second.
Discussion?
Maybe Mr. Cortez would like to just outline why we're asking for this amendment?
The, the original guarantee that was approved by the Board was for $1,200,000. Due to some restructuring with the required funding to fully complete the project, that went from $1,200,000 to $1,245,000, thereby negating a change in our recitals to properly represent the additional $45,000. I've taken a look over the Visitors Bureau's financials that they have presented and they have adequate money set aside in their budget to pay the debt service on this note. In addition, we also asked the pass-through agent for their funding. Should there be any problem with paying the debt service, obviously, the Board could distribute the, pay the debt service on their behalf before they distribute funds directly to the Visitors Bureau. So I don't necessarily see a problem with, with the home guarantee from the county at this time.
We've already voted for it once.
You have, sir.
And you're adding $45,000 to it?
It's just to represent that $45,000 change in the total funding package.
And even though they have $183,000 in excess cash, you didn't think it was appropriate for them to pay the cash?
They, they approached Port Authority for, for bond funding. It was a, it was a funding deal that was allowed under the Port Authority and it was a guarantee needed because the county collects the revenue on behalf of the Visitors Bureau and not the Visitors Bureau. That's why we're in the loop.
I know why we're in the loop, but they also have excess cash in their accounts here. They could have paid it themselves, the cash, the $45,000.
They probably could have, so that's, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear. Thanks.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Under the County Airport, number thirteen, need to authorize the appointment of Al Taylor as a member to the Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of James Zangali, who has resigned. The term is effective February twenty-seventh, 2003, expiring December thirty-first, 2003.
Madam Chair, before you entertain a motion on this, I would just like to make a statement. When Commissioner Moore came on board, we expanded the Airport Authority by two to become a nine-member board. Since that time, two members have resigned, one being James Zangali and the other Philip Schwenz, who was the appointment of the original six airport members to make a seventh. So currently, it's my understanding that the Airport Board is at a strength of seven and I would like to see it remain at seven as opposed to filling this term.
Do we jeopardize our, what if the Airport Board fills that place? Could we get something in writing and have the Airport Board allocate one of their seven as a member from the Board? And that way maintain the seven? Yeah, do you follow me or no?
Good suggestion. In other words...
Can we hold those for a week until Jim gets back with us, maybe, and see if they could allocate one of the appointments as an Airport Board appointment?
You know, I think I know where you want to go. I'm not quite sure I understand, though. They have the one appointment you want to commit...
They haven't filled their one appointment that they're allowed by their statute of name, so...
Okay, you want to ask them to, to vacate that position or to fill it? I'm sorry.
How about vacate it? I like that better. That's a better idea, but I think, I don't mind waiting a week to see if you can come up with an idea. My concern is if they nominate, if they nominate another person, then...
Well, they can nominate, but it is not official until we appoint, is it?
I think they're allowed to appoint on their own...
I think under their bylaws, they have one appointment that they make to the Airport Authority, is made by their Board.
Without us?
I believe so.
Then I would ask that we formally request them not to fill that appointment.
And I think that that's what...
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if we can do that, that's fine, too.
Do we need a motion?
No, I can, I can act. It's administrative action, I can act on behalf of the Board.
We can do it next week.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Under the Community Development Department, number fourteen, like to advertise notice of public hearing to amend the fiscal year 2000 Community Housing Improvement Program as a chip grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Development. The hearing will be held on Thursday, March thirteenth, 2003, at 10:30 AM here in the public hearing room. All the terms contained in the original CDBG agreement will remain the same. Citizens are encouraged to attend this meeting to review and comment on the county's proposed amendment, amendments. Like to publish this notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on March third and tenth, 2003.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number fifteen, like to approve and enter into agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Lorraine County Urban League for Fair Housing Services for Lorraine County. Funds have been allocated for this project from the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $13,400. This agreement is effective February twenty-seventh, 2003, expiring August thirty-first, 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Number sixteen, like to amend the Lorraine County Revolving Loan Fund Guidelines and add a downtown building rehabilitation program as a component of the Lorraine County RLF Program effective April first, 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Ron, the only thing, the only question I had is the $500, the fee for, for the companies that would pay the county a fee, wasn't that $500?
I thought, I thought we weren't doing that anymore. I thought you had somebody else doing it. Is that right? That one you're talking about, that fee?
The revolving loan.
Well, the fee's, the fee's still there, but we talked about restructuring that fee, correct?
It is. There's three categories that the revolving loan is now going to have instead of the one. Category one and two, which are the larger loans, the, you know, anywhere from about $50,000 up to $150,000, they'll pay a $500 fee. The smaller one that is ceilinged out at, at $10,000 will pay a $100 fee.
Okay, 'cause I thought the $500 was rather high.
It's a one-time fee and it's the standard that most people use in the state of Ohio, so we've not had any complaints by it. We can certainly waive that if you wish.
Well, I think I'd like to see it reduced. Will the bank charge a fee also? Is there a bank's, a fee on the bank's part of what they, whatever they do?
We provide, we provide the gap financing in these loans so that there's a commercial loan component and that's separate of ours. We have our revolving loan fund through a trust department and they do charge us for administering the, the trust portion. We can look at recommending to the CIC to lower that amount if you wish, but that's been at $500 for a number of years.
Yeah, but we, we really don't make that many loans out of the revolving loan fund and this could be a stumbling block.
Okay.
I would just ask if that be reviewed.
Are we going to pass these guidelines today and then ask for a possible amendment in the future? What is the...
If, if I might suggest, we are suggesting that they not take effect till April first and we can have the information back to the Board of Commissioners within two weeks concerning the application fee. Whether you want to pass it now contingent upon that or table it until that point, it's, it's up to the Board. We would like to start at the beginning of a month, so we picked April first as a starting date. This matter has gone before the CIC, so we probably should call them back if we're going to make that adjustment and, and let them know that.
Well, we've already made the one adjustment, right?
Right. What, what is the amount? The one in categories one and two, you said are the larger amounts. What, what are those parameters for the dollar amount that they can make application for?
Category two, the minimum amount has to be $50,000, maximum amount is $100,000. Category one, while it's not written here, historically, it's been $80,000 to $150,000. And then category three, minimum is $2,500, maximum $10,000. Application fee we've established is $100 for category three and category two, as well as one, would be the $500. And frankly, that was an effort, as I understand it, historically, to cover some of the administrative costs that the General Fund would be picking up to administer that. That's to replenish, you know, the, the staff time on those applications, but...
But there's also, they're also paying an interest on, on this loan, too.
The, the new categories, we only had one before, we've broken them out in three because we're targeting specific levels of investment opportunities. Specifically, we're looking towards the category three, right? The $2,500 to $10,000 as being something that may get a lot of use.
That would be something that would get a lot of use, that's smaller, that's a smaller loan, that tends to be where we get a lot of the inquiries and we've been precluded from doing that based on our own requirements. The other, the other...
We dropped the job requirement, right, under...
Right, we've dropped the job requirement. We'll take a look at it on a case-by-case basis. In some cases, they may be wanting $10,000 and it justifies a full-time job. Some cases, there may just be a piece of equipment that will make the operation more efficient, so no jobs would be required, or there may be part-time jobs that might be required. Category two versus category one, category one will pay for new construction as well as facility expansion, purchase of equipment and machinery, where category two basically only allows for the purchase of machinery and equipment, but it's a lesser amount, no new construction in that.
And we used to be capped out at $100,000 before?
Yeah, we went to $130,000. We did have a, an amendment that allowed us to go on one AccuColor at $130,000, but we're taking it to $150,000. All of this has been reviewed by the State of Ohio Department of Development as well as the CIC, but we can go back and look. And we do have a substantial amount of money in the revolving loan fund, so it might be an excellent opportunity to, to market if businesses are out there interested, to contact us because we really want to get this money. We have in excess of $500,000 in this fund that we need to get out into the business community during these tough economic times.
What's the desire of the Board?
Well, I don't know if the fees would be prohibitive or not. I don't like the fact that we're going to have to go back and call another CIC meeting if there's any other way that you could do it. Is it necessary for the CIC to approve this?
Administratively, if this is the desire of the Commissioners, we can just merely correspond with the members and tell them that as it came to the Commissioners, that adjustment was made.
You did. Do you have any comments?
I'm happy with the way it is, so...
You want to let the fees stand as they are?
Sure.
I'd like to see us move forward. We can review the fees as we go down the road, can we not?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
That's what I'd rather do.
Let's do that then for now, because I don't want to stop the process, so...
Correct. And I'll place that on the agenda for the next CIC meeting. You know, they're at demand, but we'll put that on for the next meeting to, to talk about that with them. That's the way I should...
Okay, and then we can make an adjustment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Item number seventeen, need to advertise the following bids. A, for Avon Lake Handicap ramps in Avon Lake, Ohio, a CDBG-funded project, estimate of cost $22,000. This will be received until 2:30 PM on Wednesday, March nineteenth, 2003. And B, the Amherst Township Hall handicap restrooms, a CDBG-funded project, estimate of cost $12,960. This will be received until 3:00 PM on Wednesday, March nineteenth, 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Item number eighteen, need to amend Resolution number zero three dash one zero six, adopted February thirteenth, 2003, authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to provide down payment assistance, rehabilitation assistance on behalf of Amanda Lynn Bonnely from Lorraine County's Community Housing Improvement Program. Said amendment is a housekeeping resolution to transfer funds in the amount of $8,500 and should say to the housing rehabilitation account on number twenty-two four zero one dash two zero, two six zero one dash four five zero one one zero, in order for Amanda Lynn Bonnely to close her loan by Friday, February twenty-eighth, 2003, in order to secure her interest rate.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the County Transit Board, number nineteen, like to authorize the reappointment of Ray Noble as an alternate member to the Lorraine County Transit Board. Term will be effective retroactive to January first, 2003, expiring December thirty-first, 2003.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to comment that the Board already has two alternates and I don't believe it's necessary to fill a third and/or a fourth alternate position, so I will not be voting aye on this matter.
What's the layout of the Board? Is this supposed to be 50-50 that you guys are aware of when it comes to party affiliation?
Yes, we're supposed to have equal representation.
How many independents are on the Board, are you aware?
One.
And there is two Republicans, one Independent, and four Democrats. Okay, I just want to make sure.
These are alternate positions, though, and...
But they're the ones that move up next?
Well, they fill in when a regular, if there's a regular Board member that's not there. And they're paid to attend these meetings the same as the regular Board members.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Domestic Relations Court, Voices for Children, number twenty, like to approve the Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court funding of $40,000 to be requested from the National Court Appointed Special Advocate Association. This funding will enable the Court to expand the Voices for Children program. No cash match will be required by the General Fund.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
See, someone's here. Do you want to discuss it real quick? Vote one real quick.
Sure, the Voices for Children program, last time it expanded was in 1998 and it started in 1990. It was a personnel expansion for a volunteer coordinator. We're looking for more volunteers to help the children of dependency, neglect, and abuse as well. That expansion allowed 30 to 40 extra volunteers to come on board to help the children for the Voices for Children program. the Voices for Children program. This expansion, we're looking at $20,000 per year. For two years, it'll be $40,000. One of the main focuses is on television advertisement. Speaking to Scott Muske yesterday on the Board, he indicated that right now for $10,000, we can get $20,000 worth of advertising. So we'll be able to get, right now, we have two television advertisements out there. This will just give us an extra one, so four advertisements for the year 2003. Another expansion is as well as radio ads.
Can I, for a moment? We have, Hal's been working on fill the spots. We have an allotment of two hours for the Commissioners now, and if we don't fill the two hours with a Board meeting, we're allowed to put in material. Last week, we reaired the groundbreaking on the Justice Center as part of our time slot. Hal did that. If you could give him a copy of Hal, to Hal of your commercials, I've seen it run, we can use that when we're trying to fill gap time with our allotted time slots. So you may get some...
That'd be great.
Some extension of the usability of your commercial. So, you know, we can all work together on that. My administrative assistant, Sandy, she's back there somewhere, she's going to be working, coordinating that initiative, so if you'd like, meet with her, and we'll see if we can help you guys out.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
And the County Engineer, number 21, like to advertise for bids for replacing Vermont Street Bridge, number 0486. A non-refundable deposit is required for each set of bidding documents. The engineer's estimate of cost is $395,608. This will be received until 2:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th, 2003. I'd like to publish the notice in the Chronicle-Telegraph and Morning Journal on March 4th and 11th, 2003.
So moved. Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number 22, I'd to approve the changing of Griswold Road from Lake Avenue to the Lurie City Corporation Limit from a township road to a county road, and authorize the clerk to forward the information to the Director of Transportation for approval. The Lurie Township Trustees are requesting this change in designation for the following reasons. A, the road fits the description of a county road in that it connects a county road and a state highway. B, the county improved a portion of this road as part of the Lake Avenue Improvement Project. And C, it is highly-traveled commercial road that the township budget has a difficult time maintaining. It should be improved to three lanes to allow left-turn storage for the commercial business, and the County Engineer does recommend this approval.
So moved. Second?
Discussion?
Can anyone say anything about it, or?
Well, Commissioners, this is the, this is the same road that you approved, having the engineer apply for money to upgrade, and at that point, you also requested that we look at the sewer issue up and down Griswold Road, and we have met with the city administration, and talks are ongoing with regard to that issue. So it makes perfect sense to make it a county road while Mr. Connie's applying for those funds, and we're talking with the city of possibly accepting flow from that area.
So we're just basically giving march in orders to get the third lane? We're not, because that's got to come back to fund that, correct?
Right. You'll be seeing a lot more information as funding develops.
Okay.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Lorraine County Sheriff's Department, number 23, I'd to approve and enter into a video court arraignment system with the Oberlin Police Department, Amherst Police Department, Wellington Police Department, and South Amherst Police Department. The initial startup cost for the sheriff's office is for remodeling, camera, monitor, and phone line at a cost of $4,882.60, to be paid from the sheriff's equipment account, and there will be an annual phone line fee of approximately $400 per year to be paid from the sheriff's utility account. Contracts will be worked out with each agency in conjunction with the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office, based on the percentage of usage, and this system will benefit all agencies involved, will save money in transportation costs, employee costs, in guarding and security of inmates. Sheriff's committee and all the chiefs of police have reviewed and recommend this approval. So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
I see most of the sheriff and most of the chiefs of police are here, too.
Commissioners, yes, this program started over a year ago, and Chief Mormon from Oberlin Police Department was the catalyst behind this, and he also met with Chief Dillon from Amherst Police Department and former chief Jimmy Brown from South Amherst, and there's representatives here also from South Amherst. We believe this is a good concept, and all the chiefs have bought into it, and obviously it's going to be cost-effective. I mean, the startup costs are most of your major costs, and I'm not over here asking you for any more monies. These are monies that I can absorb in my budget presently to do this work. My own maintenance men will do the remodeling in-house, so we're saving money that way, too. But I think it's a win-win situation when you don't have to move inmates out of a jail for obvious reasons. You don't have deputies guarding them or the police officers guarding. It cuts down on courtroom traffic, so like I say, Judge Januzzi's behind us from Oberlin Court also, and as you know, we're already doing it for some of the county courts and also for Lurie Municipal Court. I think this system's actually a little bit better, because when we first started this, we had those microwave dishes, and as you know, we've had a lot of problems with those with lightning striking them and everything else, and we think with this ISDN line that they're going to do, it's going to work a lot better. But I give Chief Mormon credit for, you know, exploring this whole program, and actually what held us up to this long was a lot of renovations going on at the jail. But we're ready to move forward with this, and like I say, once again, I think it's very cost-effective. Now, I don't know if any other chiefs would like to comment?
I'll say that for a second.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. When it originally, I originally presented the program to the county because I saw it in another county, and I thought it was great, and I think we were among one of the first in the State of Ohio to do this. And to see the expansion, I think, is really great, because when we started, it was just the county and the City of Lurie. City of Lurie paid for its portion from here to there, and I think they paid for half of this. But I really want to commend each and every one of you for being a part of this, and at that time, I really didn't know how to go about getting this into the county, and my son-in-law, who is now deceased and worked for Cable at that time, was a huge help in this, and also Gene Hartman really assisted in it.
I think he volunteered.
And to see it expanded like this, it's really heartwarming and great, because, like you said, it saves the transportation expense, the deputies going back and forth, and it's a great security measure for the county.
He volunteered his time, didn't he?
Yes, Dave did volunteer his time, and I think it's really great.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
I want to thank each and every one of you and the judges, too. We have to really give them some credit in this.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in.
I would also like to move to name this the David Mezze's Arraignment System, Video Arraignment System, in memory of David Mezze.
With this one system?
Yes. I know, he contributed an awfully lot, and if it wasn't for him, we probably would have never started this in the county. What would that entail?
I don't know.
Just name the system. Instead, just Arraignment System, David Mezze's Arraignment System, Video Arraignment System. I'll second. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
So we're not, this is no longer a video court arrangement system? It's the David?
Mezze's Video Court Arraignment System.
Okay. Aye.
Okay. Reports, comments, Mr. Cordez, administrative?
I have no reports or comments this morning, thank you.
Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
No report.
Commissioners, report.
This is the new brochure that's being presented by the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau, sponsored by Lorraine County Commissioners. This is part of the marketing money that was allocated to the Community Development Department, I believe, and they in turn allocated this to the Visitors Bureau. It's promoting the Centennial?
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial, whatever it is. Yeah, you know, things, 100 years, I can't... Yes, I was around for the first one and the one before that, too, so there. That's all I have to report, thank you.
I didn't say that.
He did.
I have none.
I just want to make one statement here. We got a notice, a legislative update, that the House concurs with the Senate to authorize the governor to cut local government funds up to $30 million. I think this will mean another cut for us of approximately $600,000 by June or July. Is that how you understood that?
That's how I understood it, about $600,000.
And anyway, CCAO is encouraging all the Commissioners, every elected official, to communicate with their senators, their representatives, to urge them to change this somehow and stop these cuts. What's happening is the feds are making cuts, passing them down to the state, and the state is passing them down to the local government, and it winds up that the locals are going to have to always put the tax on, so we look like the bad guys, when actually, it starts at the top and it's coming down here. So I would encourage anyone to write to their elected representatives in the House and the Senate and encourage them to stop making cuts on the local government. Trickle-down economy.
Commissioners, not trickle-down, it's land-on-our-head economy.
It's terrible.
Okay, because we can ill afford another cut in local government fund, as you know about the weaknesses that we're experiencing right now.
And it's not only us, it's the schools and libraries and the whole system. It's not a pleasant situation. That's all I have, thank you.
Ma'am, Kirk, under my business, I forgot to request an executive session for personnel issues. Mr. Phil passed me, and now it reminded me. We have to discuss the potential new hires, and I'd like to request an executive session before, whenever we get done here.
We can do that after the regular business.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
We have an appointment scheduled for 10:15. Lorco is here to make a presentation of the construction of collector sewers in Carlisle and Eaton Townships.
I'm Jim McConlon, Vice President of the Lorco Board of Directors, and I believe each of you have a copy of the plan as it's been submitted to Ohio EPA, and I don't really intend to spend a lot of time going through the details of it. Be happy to answer any questions you have about it. I did want to say that our purpose today is to seek your approval of a resolution as requested by NOACA that indicates that the Lorco Phase 1 wastewater collection system proposal, as it was presented to Ohio EPA in the preliminary engineering study, is consistent with the joint DMA planning agreement that exists between Lorraine County and Lorco. This Phase 1 plan provides for wastewater collection service to approximately 50% of Eaton Township and 20% of Carlisle Township. The house count in this area as of last summer was 1,264 and an estimated population of 3,800. This area has been identified by Lorraine County General Health District as one of the primary areas within the county with a large number of failed, poorly performing home septic systems. And additionally, this area is identified within Lorraine County Comprehensive Plan and by NOACA population projections as a primary growth area within the next decade. One of Ohio EPA's requirements for any proposed wastewater plans in this area of the state is for NOACA to determine the plan's consistency with the 208 Water Quality Management Plan. And to that end, NOACA held an all-parties meeting last Tuesday, February 18th, to foster discussion and review of the proposal. And as a result of that meeting, U.S. Commissioners have been requested by NOACA to provide a resolution indicating that this plan is consistent with our joint planning agreement, and this joint cooperation agreement references your cooperation in this regard. I'll be happy to answer any questions. In that, the copy of the plan that you all have, the insert identified as Exhibit 8 corresponds with the map that's on the easel here, but it identifies in yellow the area that is to be treated, and that document that you have has all of the details in it as far as the engineering and the projections, but bear in mind, this is a preliminary plan at this point in time. There are a lot of steps to go through before we will have complete approval and EPA's go ahead to do the full engineering on it. I'll answer any questions that you've got. We've got some other people here that may be able to answer some questions that I might not be able to, but...
Jim, this morning, the engineer sent us over a letter here, and there were several, well, several questions on here. So I think the engineer may want to discuss some of this with you. I don't know if you want to do it now, or how do you want to handle these questions, Ken?
I think he gave those for us if we wanted to use it, correct? You provided that information for us if we wanted to use it, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's how I read it.
Yeah, we just got this morning.
On the 1,264, Jim, that you guys are projecting that's going to use a sewer system, that's what it says here?
That's the existing count as of last summer. There'll undoubtedly be additional homes and businesses beyond that by the time the system is operational.
How many, are these people aware, because I've gotten some calls, you know, negative phone calls regarding this, I mean, are these people aware that it's coming?
Well, we have, we put legal notices in the paper last summer. We held public meetings in both Carlisle and Eaton Townships. The trustees in both townships have been aware of it. Of course, both townships have representatives on the Lorco Board, and so, you know, I can't guarantee that everybody in the township is aware of it. I know that at the public meetings that we had, we had a lot of spirited discussion about it, so we've attempted to make sure that the people are aware of it. I can't guarantee that everybody does.
But usually with the county sewer system, I think, Ken, you might want to correct me, I don't know, isn't like 66% of the people have to want the sewers when you put, when we're putting in a sewer system? Don't they have to petition?
62.
62%? Have you guys ever done any studies with the people that are going to be most affected on their percentages on whether or not they want this, the 1,264 people? I don't know. You guys have done this for years, so, you know, I'm just asking.
We haven't conducted a survey of that nature, or, I mean, we don't have any requirement to, with the 6119 organization that Lorco is, they have the ability to plan for the area that's been allotted to them by NOACA, and as you know, that's a joint area for us with Lorraine County.
I had one concerned person come in and talk with me about this, and the person is a property owner, and they're concerned that the property owners that have a house on the property will be paying for this line, and that property that does not have a house will not pay for the line itself.
That's true enough. One of the founding principles of Lorco from the very beginning was that instead of utilizing front-footage assessment, since our area for service is a much more rural area of the county, there's a lot of large lots for homes and a lot of larger parcels of land, and as has been demonstrated many, many times in this county and other places in the state, when sewers are installed and assessment is done on a front-footage basis, that almost forces liquidation of land to pay for that assessment. And by using a tap fee assessment in place of a front-footage assessment, then only the users of the system will be the ones that pay for it.
Is it more fair for the tap fee?
Well, we believe it's significantly more fair than to have a front-footage assessment on bare land that may or may not be developed, and this has an implication for land conservation as well, because it allows for, well, it precludes the need to liquidate the land in order to pay the assessment in the first place. But it also provides an opportunity with sewers there for the townships that are going to be affected to utilize the conservation development, cluster home development language that I believe both of them have in their zoning, but can't be utilized at this point in time, because in this county, that can only happen when sewers are available. And that type of development allows homes to be put on smaller parcels, land can be set aside within those developments, and I think it will accommodate the housing pressure in these areas with less land being used for those, to accommodate that housing than if we did it the standard old way with front-footage assessment and handling it that way. I think we've got a lot of good logic why a tap fee assessment is a much fairer situation, especially in the rural areas, than front-footage assessment.
Right. So what is this going to be, tap fee or front-footage?
Tap fee.
This will be a tap fee?
It'll only be the users that tap into the system that will pay the tap fee assessment.
I think that the residents need to be aware of that, because apparently, this person wasn't, and they thought that they would be paying the front footage?
No.
Okay, I think that's something that people should be informed of.
I mean, they're afraid of being forced tapped in.
Pardon me?
They're afraid of being forced tapped in. That's what I'm going to get called for.
Well, they will have to tap in. State law says that any home that's located within 200 feet of a sewer that is installed has to tap in, and there's a time limit, it's either 90 or 120 days or something like that, after the system is operational, that they by law have to tap into that. I checked on that with John Karassee just yesterday to make sure that I was straight on that information.
Well, even if they have a... Well, even if they have a good septic system now, don't they, isn't there something about two years that...
I'm not clear on that. John didn't indicate to me in my conversation with him yesterday that there were any particular exceptions to this, that regardless, in fact, he even stated very clearly that a Supreme Court decision indicates that age of a system has no bearing on whether or not they have to, whether they're not mandated to connect to the system.
Yeah, I guess the one person told me that somebody at the Health Department suggested that they moved their house back.
I understand the dilemma. It's, you know, it's not a, it's not a situation that we're pleased with necessarily, but I can understand the logic behind the law and why it's that way. And it allows for accurate planning when you know that a home, any home that's within two hundred feet of where the sewer is going to go is going to have to tap in. Then you can plan for revenue from that home and, you know, make your plans more precisely that way.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may?
Yes, please.
Jim, I want to piggyback on Commissioner Basie's question. Perhaps you can expand a little bit, just for general knowledge. This preliminary design mentions a ninety-one-hundred dollar tap-in fee. And that's for the one thousand two hundred and sixty-four potential homes in that area. There's also some growth that will come. Let me finish my question, so you know where I'm going with this. But what will be required of additional people that are not in this now? What will they be required to pay as this progresses down the road?
Well, the first thing I want to mention is, is the figures that are in the plan, the ninety-one-hundred dollar tap fee assessment and the forty-dollar monthly service charge that's in the plan, are, Ohio EPA and our lending source here is USDA Rural Development, and both of them require that, all that we can utilize in planning, for planning purposes, are the existing homes. So we have to take the entire cost of the project and calculate out what, how that cost would be covered based on strictly those twelve hundred and sixty-four homes that existed last summer when we made the count. Anybody can obviously recognize the fact that by the time the system becomes operational, there will be considerably more than twelve hundred and sixty-four homes and businesses that will be served by this area. So that will necessarily guarantee that the tap fee won't have to be that high. And additionally, we have very strong plans that we've been working on that we're confident will reduce these fees significantly. As to what, somebody that comes down, comes along four or five years from now and wants to tap in and utilize this service at that time, we haven't determined yet. We just know that at this point in time, our planning constraints require that we, by the whole cost of the program, of the project here, by the twelve hundred and sixty-four, and that's where those numbers came from. But we're very, very confident that the numbers will be much less than that when we actually have to make the determination as to what these existing homeowners and businesses will have to pay from an assessment standpoint. And we also are quite confident that the monthly service fee will be less than the forty dollars that is quoted in that plan. We will be making a determination as what, as to what that future tap fee will be, but we haven't had to cross that bridge yet, and we want to see how things progress before we make that decision.
And I appreciate that. I guess that the concern, I think the same party that spoke to Commissioner Basie also spoke to me, and it was just kind of semantics. I think he felt that he would be paying ninety-one-hundred dollars now, and down the road, someone else would be paying less, and was he going to get some of his money back?
No, I, our philosophy at this point in time is that the people that have, that come along and tap in later won't pay less. And again, I don't think that the ninety-one-hundred dollars is, in fact, I'm quite confident the ninety-one-hundred dollars is not the figure that we're going to end up with. But the people that are forced to tap in because of the system's installation, and the people that indicated a desire to have taps on the system as it's being constructed will get the best prices that we can come up with for these assessments. But the people that come along later can assume that their price will be that plus something. And I'm also confident that I can say it won't exceed ninety-one-hundred dollars in the future.
Thank you.
But the problem we've had, because we've had the same hearings here, is people have to pay to collapse their septic.
That's one thing that is required.
All right, and that's going to be above and beyond. You guys have been doing this for a while, haven't you?
We've been working on a number of scenarios for quite a while, trying to find one that does the job that needs to be done and does it economically and with, you know, in a way that we can live with.
Oh yeah, my only concern is the twelve sixty-four. I mean, you do the math, it makes sense, you know? If you type into twelve sixty-four times ninety-one-hundred dollars, you know, you get your eleven million dollars back out of your seventeen, and you're only financing, you know, six million if that's the gain, I don't know, you know, you're probably going to use it for...
That's...
Yeah, operations and management, but I mean, I can see the math in that. My concern is the percentage of people on that twelve, I mean, if you've known for years these twelve sixty-four, a simple survey to these twelve hundred and sixty-four people to see if they're interested in this. Because if you're, if you're looking at only twenty percent of the people are for sewers, then we have an issue. If sixty to seventy percent say yes, then I don't, I don't see an issue.
Well, part of the situation, Dave, not to, excuse the interruption...
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Part of the service of the situation here is that the, there's a, County Health Department has indicated in a number of surveys that there are failed systems out there, a large percentage, over forty percent. And we know that growth is going to occur in this area, and we can't exactly wait until it becomes a critical situation out there to install sewers. The growth is going to occur in this area. The wastewater collection system in this area will actually go a long ways towards eliminating the health problems that exist there, and I believe will provide some real benefits as far as these townships being able to predict and direct development in a logical way that they can't do now under the existing rules for onsite systems.
I agree. I mean, I've talked to the Health Department, how to resolve this issue, when I went to their meeting, the township meeting with the Health District last March. That's what everybody talked about. I think it was like twenty thousand septics. I think it's more than forty percent. I mean, I think you're talking twenty thousand septics that are failing, according to the numbers I was hearing at that meeting. Or maybe that's, maybe it was...
No, I think you're probably right. I'm just going by the documentation I've seen.
My concern is, that's a good argument, except that that doesn't correct the twenty thousand failing septics in this county. I've talked to the Health Department, I guess, I hit a stone wall when it became, and this is typical in government, is who's going to be held accountable for following up these twenty thousand failed septic systems in the county? And then when I said, okay, well, the Commissioners, well, well, then the Health Department says, well, under statute, we're supposed to do this. And then it came down to the final issue, money. How do you pay for something like that? And so I don't, what my concern is, is you're right in the fact that the septic systems are really, are failing in this county, and the way the soil is, it's, I think it's polluting the area. But I don't think, I think there's more to this than just the sewer when it comes to the failing septic systems. I mean, maybe for the twelve hundred people over here, we still have another nineteen or eighteen thousand eight hundred people, or septics that are failing. And so my concern really is, when I hit the stone wall, was how are we going to fund a department in the Health Department? And we had some ideas of basically, you know, charging the twenty thousand septics a user fee every year, and that would fund the Health Department in order to inspect the septics. But somehow that never materialized.
Well, I understand the problem that you're defining here. It wasn't our intention to try and solve that problem countywide.
But we have to start something.
But that's our problem, yeah, but that's our problem. We have to, when it comes to these issues, it's a countywide issue. And that's why it goes, it goes right back to my issue, which is you got thirteen hundred people that are going to be affected initially. And this hopefully will be able to take care of the rest of the county when I'm probably long and gone, but...
Aren't you going to be here two hundred years too?
Well, no, and I don't age as well as you do, buddy. But what I'm wondering is, I mean, you're only talking maybe six hundred and fifty bucks for a market to send out a direct mailer with the return address to, to see if these thirteen hundred people would actually participate, or how their feelings are. I mean, just simple, basic questions. I would see if you got the support. Because if you only ended up with, if you have sixty to seventy percent supporting this, then that kind of goes in line with what the county does, which is about, well, we need a sixty-two percent of the community to lay pipe down the line, down the street. And you guys have been doing this for, I know, a long time.
Well, we've operated under the premise that the township elected officials are members of our Board of Directors, and we take our lead from their input at the Board of, the Lorco Board of Directors meetings.
Okay.
And, and that's been our premise all along, is that if, you know, that, we're going to make our decisions based on their input and their, their guidance, and that's what we think we're doing in this case.
Okay, I was just asking, Jim.
Yeah, I want, I want to remind the Commissioners that all we're here for today is, is a resolution that indicates that this is, this preliminary plan, as it's being submitted right now, conforms with the joint planning agreement that we have between the county and Lorco. It's, you know, we, we have a lot of work to do on this plan yet. We have conversations routinely with the trustees in both of these townships. We have a meeting planned in two weeks with the trustees in this, in these two townships to go over the plan in detail with our engineer. So it's an ongoing process, and I think that you'll see the timeline in the document, and in my summary there indicates that, you know, we're more than two years away from the system being operational. There's still a lot to be done in the planning process. I understand your point, Dave.
Right, yeah. Because I know we're going to be the ones getting the phone calls, not you, when they start getting that.
No, I wouldn't guarantee that, that'd be exclusively to you.
Well, we're getting a lot now, so. What resolution are you looking at? Do we have a copy? I had two here.
I think Mr. Ennis prepared...
I have two that are emailed like this. Are they, any of these two? I believe there's a lot more people here that'd like to speak. I don't know, Commissioner, what your pleasure is regarding...
Yeah, I would like to hear from others also.
Well, we're available for questions at any point if you have any additional questions.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to address the issue? Sir, would you please take the podium?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Ernie Walker, Chairman of the Board of Trustees in Eaton Township. As far as communication with the people of Eaton Township, there has been zero. The only communications that Lorco had with the trustees in Eaton Township was trustee McCourt said the people have never had a right to say anything about this. It's been rammed down their throats, ninety-one-hundred dollars being put on their tax bill, and they have never been asked if they wanted it. So he had the good sense to put an article in the paper, and Lorco did come out then and hold a meeting this past summer. Now, that is the first communications they've had with the people of Eaton Township. My concern is that our land use plan, which we all just got through spending a lot of time on, was not even considered in Lorco's design of these sewers, because they put, there's no provisions for any sewers in our industrial area at all. At one end, they have a two-inch line coming into the industrial area, and a three-inch line at the other end. Now, your sink in your bathroom is a two-inch line. That tells you how much planning there is for that area to develop. And then when we brought this up to Mr. Ospak, he said, well, I asked him, why do you have an eight-inch line planned in the Cooley Road area and only a two-inch line going down eighty-three to the industrial area? And he said, well, we have four thousand homes going into that area. Now, that isn't in our plan, and that was the first time we heard anything about it. The cost of ninety-one-hundred dollars per person winds up being an assessment on the people of about sixty dollars a month. Now, the bills will be forty to fifty dollars a month. Now, they say a minimum water bill is forty dollars. I've never had a minimum water bill, and there's only two of us living in the house. We're concerned about our seniors, we really are. We have a lot of retirees in the community. The other thing I'm very concerned about is that their contract with Avon Lake is for one point two million gallons. The Avon Lake excess capacity at this time is only one million gallons. So they don't even have enough capacity to supply this contract, and it goes on in that contract and says that if there is any expansion to be made to their sewer plant, that we will absorb that cost. So according addition to this, ninety-one-hundred dollars plus about two thousand dollars to close their septic tank, the people are going to be hit in short order. If it's true what Mr. Ospak said, now, we only have twelve hundred people just, at the present time earmarked for sewers, and the sewer line is supposed to have a capacity of six thousand. If he has another four thousand sitting in the weeds somewhere that we don't know about, we're almost at the capacity. And that means that these same people are going to be stuck with an expansion of how many million dollars, nobody knows, of Avon Lake Sewer Plant. I am very concerned about this whole planning and the communication, because Lorco's idea is that they have the right of a grant of a sewer district, and they don't have to ask anybody whether they want those sewers or not. And I thank you Commissioners for the time.
I don't know how this is going to work out, but I certainly hope it works out a little differently than rural water. Computer, it's garbage in, garbage out. This is water in with rural water, waste out. Rural water started at a hundred dollars a tap-in. What we are doing is enabling a sewer to nowhere in effect to be built on the backs of the little taxpayer. Those with large tracts of land will benefit at the end. I do not know what the tap-in's going to be now on the sewer, so to speak, but I do know that from rural water, it went from one hundred dollars, to I understand it's an excess of fifteen hundred dollars. Who will pay for that? Will it be the new homeowner? And if so, will the people who are now investing, the little guys, will they get a refund? Thank you.
Did you want to take the podium?
Gary McCourt, Eaton Township trustee, just wanted to support Ernie Walker and what he conveyed to you. One of my concerns also is with this Phase One being done all at once, the burden it could put on the Midview School District with the rapid development.
My name is Don Flood, I'm Carlisle Township, and I have a paperwork here that Mr. Ospak handed out at his meetings. And he says, where's it going, he's talking about the sewer, he says, where's it going to be built? It says Phase One is dedicated to Northern Carlisle and Eaton Townships. If you look at this map that he just put up here, this is the northern part of Carlisle Township, this is the southern part. If I stand at my house and look at the compass and see where the sewers are going, it don't say north, it sure says south. And it also says in here that per lot charge, not a front-footage, which I don't think is fair, anyway. And it mentions the ninety-one-hundred dollars and a tap-in fee. And also learned that if you don't pay that upfront and pay it over a twenty-year period, you're going to be paying seven hundred and thirty dollars more a month, or more a year on your taxes, which amounts to fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And like somebody else said, that seven hundred and thirty a year extra, if you put it on the tax due, if you divide that by twelve, you come up with sixty dollars and eighty-three cents a month. That's not counting this forty-dollar minimum sewer use. In my area, just, there's thirteen houses that touch each other. Out of the thirteen, there's... Out of the thirteen, there's nine retirees, five widows out of the nine retirees. We have a, are on retirement. We don't have this kind of money to pay out the ninety-one hundred dollar initial tap-in or even seven hundred and thirty dollars a year extra in taxes. I don't know how many lots are, are in Carlisle Township that are in Phase One. Can you tell me? Can't tell me?
How many lots?
How many lots? How many people are in Phase One in Carlisle Township?
About thirty-eight or so.
In Carlisle Township?
Oh, in Carlisle Township, I can tell you when you look.
I was going to say that, I know that's not right. And I've done a lot of research on this and I went back to when this sewer district was formed, when the judge swore it in on February the fourth of ninety-seven, and how Mr. Ospak went around to the different townships and gave them a overview of the proposed wastewater district, and I got it right here. And it also says, it was also stated that being a member of the district would allow the trustees of each member township to have input in the respective township's information and sanitary sewer installations. Well, I know of one, one township that is, don't want in the sewer district, but yet they haven't been able to get out. And I think that this is all in the benefit. When they formed this, there was twelve people that signed the petition for this sewer. I have the names. I went up to the Corte Cow House and, and got all this information. And there's only one from Carlisle Township that filed petition for this sewer. And I think it's for the benefit of the Lorraine Medine Electric Company, the Rural Water Authority, and developers. And if you want to know the truth, I think we've been flushed down the drain.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Jim, did you want to reply to some of that?
This is an excellent discussion. I would bring up a couple of points in response here. Ernie Walker's comment about the industrial area that is in Eaton Township, part of the reason that we don't show anything specific in there right now is that part of that area is in Grafton's facility planning area. And by NOAACA's authority, that they vested in both the county and in Lorco, we can only plan for the areas that are not in somebody else's facility planning area. So we, we haven't specifically got anything in the plan right now. That's one of the reasons that we have a meeting scheduled between our engineer and the township officials in two weeks is to take a look at some of these particular issues and see if there's some solution to it. Some of Mr. Walker's specific comments about line size and things like that are, are based on the best information available at the time. I think it's slightly misconstrued to indicate that we're trying to hide anything or that we know something that they don't know. All we've been able to do is put together a logical plan that is based on the existing homes and on the planning documents that are available to us from NOAACA and from the county. I think we have to get back to the, to the issue at hand today, which is to recognize that this is a preliminary plan that is being evaluated by Ohio EPA and through their request to NOAACA, the county commissioners have been requested to determine whether or not this plan in its preliminary phase, preliminary state, is consistent with the planning agreement that we have between Lorraine County and Lorco. I would, I did want to make a comment about the communication issue here. Both townships have a representative on the Lorco board. We've worked for a long time, assuming that those, that the, the line of communication was free and clear from our board's representatives to the townships and we had no indication until very end of last year that that might not have been the case in every, in every situation. And we've taken steps to try and improve that line of communication. We held the public meetings in both of these townships, not because of any article that appeared in the newspaper. We held these as a planned function of the development of this, of this proposal. So we've taken exceptional steps, I think, to try and improve the, the communication where we've noticed that there's problems. But the issue today is to take a look at this from the perspective of, of it being a preliminary plan and whether or not it is in conformance with the agreement that exists between the county and Lorco.
Jim, that line going to Avon Lake, that's going down eighty-three? State Route eighty-three?
No.
What's, what's the highway there?
Well, there is no highway there. It's utility easements and railroad easements from, it starts in approximately the area of Route fifty-seven and eighty-two, near Brentwood Village.
Okay, but what does it follow? It's not, certainly not going to be going on private property.
No, it follows primarily utility and railroad rightaways that are in existence right now and being utilized for other utilities right now.
But along what route? I'm asking, is it fifty-seven? Is it eighty-three? What route is it?
No, no particular highway. There's a.
Just going straight to light.
Ohio Edison, if, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but there's Ohio Edison utility lines and I think Norfolk and Western Railway lines, and that's the, the route that it's following. Not any particular highway. It's, it's a already existing utility rightaway. It's currently being utilized by Rural Water, among others.
Okay, there's going, there's other residents along that line. I'm, I'm saying like the, the yellow area is all where the twelve hundred residents are.
Right.
But yet there are so many other residents along that line that don't have sewers.
On the line that goes to Avon Lake?
Right, that eventually will be utilizing that line, but yet you've got twelve hundred people apparently that's going to pay for that entire line going all the way to Avon Lake.
Well, the line going to Avon Lake will not have any access from any other sources. That's a forced main and there, there will be no tap-ins to that line between where it starts at the southern end and where it connects with Avon Lake Treatment Facility.
In the future, there won't be any access to that line?
No.
Wow.
And the twelve hundred and sixty-four homes are, I can't emphasize enough, those are the homes that exist right now. We have absolutely no doubt that the cost is going to be spread over a much larger number than that. I did want, I failed to comment on Mr. Walker's mention of the contract with Avon Lake. We've been assured and John Knipper from the Avon Lake Water Department mentioned at the all-parties meeting we had last Tuesday, that they have land available for expansion, they have opportunities for expansion, but our contract with them states that our treatment cost will be their in-city cost plus ten percent. So if they make a decision to expand their treatment facilities, our contract still states that they will treat wastewater that's brought to them by Lorco for their in-city rate plus ten percent.
Okay, thanks. I think there, there's a gentleman here that would like to speak that hasn't talked yet.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bernie Nyrode, representing Wellington Township trustees. Our trustees, approximately a year ago, voted to withdraw from Lorco. They passed a resolution on March fifth, two thousand and two, requesting to be permitted to drop out. This was after a survey was conducted of the Wellington Township residents. The survey was sent to everyone in August of two thousand and one. The results indicated about sixty-five percent of the residents did not want to participate in Lorco. Through public hearings were held also. In addition, each of our individual township trustees met with Lorco officials to review again the pros and cons, reasons to be in and be out. And then this led to the vote on March the fifth, two thousand and two. Resolution was sent to Lorco requesting to be released from the district. To date, this has not been done. We've, have corresponded several other times since then and just recently in January, sent another resolutions that the trustees passed requesting Lorco to place this request on their agenda and to approve their request to be released from the district. So all we ask is that, again, we participated, did the survey of our residents, public hearings, and they are representing the feeling of the majority of the residents. And Wellington Township trustees respectfully request that the proper procedures and approval from Lorco board and any other procedures do permit them to withdraw from the district.
How much, how much did your survey cost? Remember?
Oh, a couple hundred dollars.
How many homes did you mail them out to?
All the res, all the homes in the area, about five hundred, I guess it was.
What was your, what was your response? I'm sure not all five hundred responded.
We had a hundred and thirty-six responds out of five hundred and three, I think, that was sent out.
Twenty percent.
Twenty, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, I think, ended. Commissioner Moore responded. Thank you.
I forgot to mention when I was up here before, he was talking about the failed septic systems in the, in the county. And I went to the Health Department and I don't, I didn't bring the paper with me, but it's been quoted as forty-two point seven percent and it's also been said forty-seven percent. I have paperwork at home saying that. But anyway, the, the district, they're going to put the sewers in. There's only one spot and that's on Banks Road where the Health Department found a violation, where they found some contamination. Just one in the whole area of, of where they're going to put the sewers in. There's eighteen violations in the township, but they're all in this part here, it's not covered by the sewer district. But I done my research and I, I got, I went to the Health Department, I've got this book at home and it shows, I got it for Wellington Township, I got it for all the townships that they tested. In only one place in Carlisle Township did it show that they had a problem, and that was on Banks Road.
Concerning the township trustees being represented on Lorco, I think there's twenty members on the board. There's two trustees, one from Carlisle and one from Eaton, out of a twenty. So really, no matter what they would say, their vote wouldn't mean anything. As far as the commercial district that we were talking about is on eighty-three. One side of a road is Lorco's planning district. The other side is Grafton's planning district. It did not stop Lorco from planning along the Hawk Road area, where the other side of a road is outside of their service area and planning district. So that doesn't make an argument to me at all. And the other thing I'm a little concerned at, this morning I heard, always up till now, I've heard that this ninety-one hundred dollars, as other houses went into it, we would be reduced. You know, if, as long as I didn't pay my cash upfront, that I would be able to get money back on it. That's what I've been implied to up till now. This morning, everybody, the statement was made that everybody coming in at a later date is going to pay ninety-one hundred dollars. My concern is that it's going to be like Rural Water. Any money that comes in won't go to the people that paid off this major line going to Avon Lake. It's going to go to put more lines in other places, just like Rural Water. Unfortunately, I have a three-inch water line going down my street. There's been fifty-five or sixty homes built there since that line was put in. And they're more interested in putting water lines down in Ashland County. And I'm afraid that's going to be the same thing that happens here.
Good morning. I'm Calvin Woods. I'm a township trustee in Wellington, but I'm not here as a township trustee today. I'm here as Calvin Woods, resident of Wellington Township, and also as a teacher, which I take great pride in stating there. Everybody hears about the Ohio proficiency, most people hear about the Ohio proficiency test these days. We're trying to get all the students of our country and state to learn about democracy and government. And everything that's going on here in this process, to me, is slapping those characteristics of democracy right in the face there. I teach my kids to get the facts, use primary sources, get options, make sound decisions. I tell them that there's government agencies all in place to take care of all the needs of our country, and if there's not, they'll make a new one, like the Home Security Department there. I teach my kids about how they should, the, the people run this country and have a right to their voice. And then when I hear someone say that there's no requirement to have a survey and it's not necessary, that really hurts me. It really upsets me horribly there that people don't have a say in this. Going on to something else there, the cluster home situation, we know about zoning. I mentioned zoning to my students there and that the zoning laws, in most cases, that go to the courts on zoning, get defeated there because we, in our country, we cannot force people to do what they can't, we cannot force people to do something with their land they don't want to do or vice versa. And that being is on the cluster home situation. What if there's a scenario where a man has a hundred acres? He owns a hundred acres and that's great, the cluster plan is good. What happens if somebody comes in and takes those twenty-five homes and puts them on twenty-five acres just as a numbers game? And in ten years down the road, somebody comes in and said, hey, you know, I got seventy-five acres and I want to put in twenty-five more homes, you know? That man states, states, I'm sorry, that man stands to make some more money, which he has the right to do, and who can stop him from putting twenty-five more homes on that land? And there goes your land use situation out the window there. We got, one of the things that I understood to come up with this Lorco was to, to avoid annexation there. Well, I've been talking with some people in my area that think there's a different way to go about avoiding annexation. That is to communicate with the present facilities already in place and not try to add something new to the situation. We've got enough agencies already stepping on other agencies. That's proof in the, the new formation of the committee that the President Bush is trying to get into, bring all these agencies together. We already have enough agencies stepping on other people's toes, you know? We far as the failed systems and I, the number twenty thousand, does that sound correct to you, Commissioners?
That's what was told to me at the Health District meeting with other.
I'm sorry?
That was, that's what was told to me. Maybe that not to fail, but there's twenty thousand that are not being supervised. Now, that's, that's how, that's how many are failing.
Okay, well, there's a, you know, there, there's a big.
That's a big difference.
Big number games, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty thou, you know, I, I would venture to say from common sense, and I do have a little bit of it, I feel, if twenty thousand systems were failing in Lorraine County, we would have one big pollution problem in the Black River.
I think we do.
There. But, and the next thing is, my next step, okay, if we got systems failing, and that was already addressed a little bit, but right now in our country, our state, in our county of course, I should say, we have an E check situation. We have a pollution problem. So everybody that lives in Lorraine County, whether your car's polluting or not, pays twenty bucks a month to go out there to make sure you're not polluting. Well, I don't mind doing it. I guess it's a necessary evil, you know? But on the other hand, I don't want to pay for someone else's problems. So I wish we'd get a different system in the E check. The same thing, what I'm, what I'm headed for is.
I agree.
I'm sorry. What I'm headed for is, thank you. What I'm headed for, I'm sorry, I thank you for listening to me. I forgot to mention that earlier, but this is not my most fun thing to do. But if we have failed systems out there, then let's go out and, like you said, check the, you know, pay a fee. We got a problem. Environment is one of the biggest things we teach our young people in our, in our country. We got a problem with environment, let's go out and let's attack the problem, like you, you're again, you were referring to that, Mr. Moore, you know? Attack the problem in, in a more logical, common sense, simple way. Let's go out and require the Health Department, which one of the agencies we have in place, to go out and, and take care of the health and welfare of our people. Give them the power and the tools to go out there and inspect the systems that are failing. And if they're failing, give these residents a chance, a year or two, to get their. And if they're failing, give these residents a chance, a year or two, to get their system up to snuff and the system's going to be fixed a lot faster than the projected time of Lorco.
Well, that's what I, I looked at a $25 user fee if you have your own independent sewer system, because everyone has to pay for their own sewer system if you're in the city. And that $25 generates about a half a million dollars a year that they can use to hire people to inspect and then use, use some of that money for revolving loan fund. So, if someone's retired and not making any money, could actually use this money as, as either a no-interest loan to help pay back and use it almost as an easement with the Auditor's Office. Somehow, what happened was we, we started bringing some people together, the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, Prosecutor's Office, the Health Department, and just kind of, kind of got put on the side, I think, because I don't think we could get everybody to work together to implement this. So, that's kind of what happened about last, I think it was like six, seven months ago regarding the septic system.
Yeah, I, I know there's, you know, here again, I wish I was much more intelligent, knowledgeable than I am, because I, but.
Well, don't say that. You're a teacher, you shouldn't say that.
But, well, we can't know about everything, of course. But when it comes to the failed system, back again to make sure I wanted to make my point there is, yeah, you know, we, we pay a lot of taxes, some we can see the direct results of, like keeping the roads clean in the wintertime and some we don't. I would think $25 would be a, a very minimal fee for a homeowner to pay, you know, knowing that his system is not, his or her system is working or not working and then get it fixed up. We've had some residents, I have some friends that had failed systems. They did talk with the Health Department. The Health Department worked with them extremely well and they did, in fact, get their systems fixed and they're running up to the satisfaction of the Health Department now. And that's the way the system is supposed to work. As far as the pollution is concerned, I know that when a company come in and wanted to build a pollution, or I'm sorry, wanted to build a, some kind of a incinerator up at the headwaters of the Black River, that there was a study done and there was no pollution in the Black River until you get up to beyond another company's, I will not mention their name, another company's situation. And then the pollution went up drastically and I don't have all the figures in my head to make any comments about that, but there's, at this point, it's not been proven to me that there is pollution. The EPA has not cited us, that is, Lorraine County is far, to my knowledge, for any kind of pollution there. And so, that's my situation with the pollution and failed systems. As far as the study goes, and it was mentioned that the purpose of this meeting is for the preliminary plan to be approved, okay? I was talking with one of the executives, in fact, that's, that's what I come up with now, of the Ohio Water Development Association, and he had informed me that when this was originally passed due to the study, that there was a much higher amount of money given to the Lorco than they used. They used approximately $200,000. I don't know the exact amount, but that's not the point, of course, is, but when, the point was to me was when they went back and asked for more, the Ohio Water Development Authority asked for more information before they would grant them more money and they couldn't give them any more information. And so, Ohio Water Development did not give them any more allotments, which had already been approved, to be given, but they had not went through the proper steps. And so, that's all I know about that. If anyone wants to contact the Water Authority, they're more than welcome to there. I think as far as the situation here is just like last year, I heard about the, how the Highway Ohio Department, ODOT, excuse me, was not, was going to redo a certain intersection. And someone said, well, it's not going to stop the congestion. And one of the, the ODOT officials said, well, no, you know, the taxpayers of Ohio are not going to pay for development to come in and make their roads for them. Developers have to pay something. They have to share in this. And that was a very good point and I was very pleased to hear that. And like I said, I, the gentleman mentioned that there was, it was about development. I think that's, I'm sorry, but I think that's exactly what it's about, development and money there. And if there's a problem out there, I think that we should, I don't know, the very simple rules of, of decision-making. Identify the problem, get your options, get your facts and make a decision. And thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to open the floor for further discussion. Is there anyone else here that has any comments or discussion? Okay. What's the desire of the board?
The commissioners be interested in doing a survey since none has ever been done on the 1,264 homes.
What did you figure the cost of the survey would be?
Well, eight hundred bucks, you know, even a thousand dollars. I mean, I figured out a 50 cents a, a postcard, that gives you about $685, but since nobody's ever asked the people that are going to be affected, I think it'd be appropriate to ask them what they feel about having, having this issue.
Well.
I just, I.
I don't even know if we need a survey. I mean, you can't turn a blind eye to the, to the cost. It's $9,100 right there, plus, what was it, $40 a month, plus the, the closing fee for a septic system. I think your survey's going to be pretty much like, people are not going to be able to afford that.
Well, granted, but it's like what Ken, Ken says, usually they get a feel from the area petition, I think usually through a petition process. If they can get 62 percent of the households to agree.
That's correct.
Then, then the county then proceeds to put in, to put in a sewer line. So, why not be consistent with what the policies of the commissioners are and see if there's a petition? I mean, it sounds like no one's done a petition on this area. And so, I think this issue's bigger than just these 1,200, but I don't want to go there, so.
Commissioner Bligh?
I mean, if these, well, I mean, if some 180 people said they want it, then I don't, I don't see a problem supporting it. But now we're at, we're at a crossroads and we have to make a decision, so. I'm sorry.
Well, this is an interesting topic for discussion. Mr. Ennis, as the legal counsel for the commissioners who helped prepare the consent agreement between Lorco and the Board of Commissioners, do you have any comment to make on this application, apart from what Commissioner Moore has suggested? I mean, do, is there any thing that you want to say to us? If you don't, it's okay.
I'm being careful, Commissioner. In the, in the last three weeks, I managed to anger everybody from the Attorney General to the municipal bailiffs to Elio Zerbinas. And my, my townships are very divided over this issue, so I'm, I want to try not to make every one of them angry, so I probably will do that. It was not the intent in drafting this agreement to require Lorco to come back to the county to get approval of everything they did. Lorco is an independent sewer system and they have independent authorities. The county is jointly involved and I think the concept was to allow the opportunity for the county to have some input, to raise concerns and to raise objectives, objections if they had any. And I think Mr. O'Toole and I have not agreed on, on everything over the last year or so, but I, I don't think there was ever any intent to make the county be able to supersede what Lorco does or, or give a thumbs up or thumbs down to what Lorco does. They are an independent authority. I'm not pleased that this has come around and is now back in the county's lap and they're, they're now in the middle of it. You know, this is, you know, the overall idea of what they're going to do here is Lorco's decision and it's, it's, it's not the county's decision. And as several of you mentioned, it's a little bit distressing to have, and I'm sure as the result of this meeting, it's going to be perceived that, that the county is in control of, of this plan and this system and it is not. NOAACA has required some kind of, of approval or response from the county. The resolution that was drafted is basically taking from language that was they submitted. I, I don't necessarily believe that is required. If the county wants to convey to NOAACA as the result, you know, if the county does not feel it is in a position to say, we support or we agree with this concept and merely wants to say, we have some concerns, we hope they're addressed, you know, as a result of this discussion today, you have those concerns, then that would be my recommendation as to how the county proceeds. I mean, I think the idea of the plan was to give the county an opportunity to voice any concerns or issues that it would like to see addressed and not be a thumbs up, thumbs down arbiter on, on this thing, so.
But that's what they put us in.
That's what they put us in.
That'd be like us telling the City of Illyria or St. Lorraine what they can and can't do, correct?
Well, I mean, we are jointly involved, so we have a little bit bigger role in it than that, but, but agreed. The ultimate decision as to what's going to be done here is not the county's, it goes back to NOAACA and eventually to EPA. And I think, at least when I wrote it, it was designed to be the opportunity for the county to express any concerns it had and have that conveyed onto EPA.
So, actually.
And I hope Dennis, we can agree on that.
So, actually, our concerns wouldn't, it wouldn't even be relevant?
No, I, I, I think it's an informational thing for NOAACA or EPA to take a look at and this is our chance to raise those concerns, but I don't think we're supposed, and it was never intended for us to be some kind of veto authority.
Right.
Mr. O'Toole, does, did you like to hear from Mr. O'Toole?
Is he here? Yes.
Does he want to talk?
Just very briefly, what Jerry says is correct. And again, I think the resolution that Jerry prepared, which I've seen before you, is not in any respect an endorsement by the county of the plan. It simply says to NOAACA, who requested this, is it okay for us to consider this? Does Lorraine County have any objection to looking, to us, NOAACA, looking at this preliminary plan? As Jim McConnell indicated, we're more than two years away from getting this system operational. There's a lot of things that have to be done, there are a lot of excellent points and some misstatements of, of fact or some things which are not clear, which obviously Lorco needs to do a better job in, in communicating to the various residents. I underscore what, what Jerry said, by no stretch of the imagination are you being asked today to endorse, approve or give your blessing on this preliminary, and I italicize that word, preliminary, application that was submitted to Ohio EPA is being reviewed by NOAACA. And from, from my attendance at that meeting last February 18th, last week, was simply, is it okay for us to consider it? That, I think, is in essence what that resolution that Jerry prepared that is before you. Thank you.
Again, the resolution was submitted to me from NOAACA. I'm neither, you know, that's just some proposed language. You know, I, I tried to keep away from an endorsement or that sort of thing. If, this is what NOAACA is requesting from you, if the commissioners decide they want to step back from that, you know, and express our concerns, you know, we can, we can reword it. So, that's just some proposed language.
Much time we got?
Well, I know, I know Lorco wants to get it on the NOAACA. I think it's set for a meeting in March 19th, but I think in order to get it on the agenda, they got to get it by March 12th. Is that right, Jim? I mean, I, I know we have to at least next, next week.
Ma'am Chair, if I may make a couple comments?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Under board correspondence today, item number four is the NOAACA project notification and response form, Lorraine County rural wastewater district, construction of collector sewers in Carlisle, Eaton, townships and interceptor sewers in Carlisle, Eaton Townships and Avon Lake, funding amount $17,900,000. This form was sent out previously by NOAACA, but it carried an incorrect dollar amount and so they are correcting it so that the parties that received it can have accurate information. I spoke to John Beaker, who is the head of the Environmental Section of NOAACA, earlier this week, after I talked to Jerry about timeframe. And John Beaker said to me that he found, and this is conversation, so sometimes things get lost in the translation, but he said he believed the funding is pending and I did notice by the application that Lorco has submitted, they, they make a statement with respect to the funding. It says on page 44, Lorco's USDA/RD loan application of 17.9 million has been approved. Dr. Beaker said that the reason NOAACA is looking at this is because Lorco cannot proceed until they receive a permit to install from the Ohio EPA and the Ohio EPA requires this consistency review. So, that's kind of my comment, how we got from where we are to, where it started to where we are today. So, this is part of their process and I, I find it interesting that Jerry said that, that we are not required to respond to this. Is that what you said? I thought that was interesting. And, and I'm not disputing that, I'm just, I'm listening.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I, I don't think we're required to say, we give this thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay, all right.
At least according to the way we drafted the agreement.
By, by virtue of the agreement you're speaking?
I mean, we may want to say we don't have any, I mean, you may want to say you have some formal objections, you may want to say we don't have some formal objections, but we've got some concerns, depending on what your pleasure is. If you feel inclined and you want to say we approve it, you certainly have that option, but I don't think it was ever intended to, again, require the county to give it a categorical thumbs up or thumbs down. Obviously, that is what NOAACA is now asking.
Well, but you didn't, by, by virtue of the resolution that you prepared for us, we didn't say thumbs up or thumbs down, did we? I mean, if we adopt this resolution, it doesn't say that we are in support of it. What we, what it says, I believe, is that we.
Agreed. Agreed, that, that resolution does not indicate that the county supports this or endorses it.
Okay, and it also says that it is consistent with the December 15, 2000 agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Lorco, which is why I first invited your comments into this. And this is a consistency review overall, not just consistent with our agreement, but consistent with principles that NOAACA has with respect, if I go back to my notes from that February 18th meeting, there were four areas that, that the consistency review consists of five items that were carried on the agenda for that meeting as prepared by NOAACA and they are, is regarding the designated management agency status, local consultation requirements, use of appropriate population projections, project affordability and facility planning The purpose of that meeting was to develop issues and facts relative to these issues and determine what information and actions need to be taken to complete the review. There were to be no decisions by public authorities at that meeting and there were none.
Jerry, how can we word that this, this, that the board will not take a position regarding the preliminary engineering study for Phase 1 wastewater collection system as submitted by Lorco to EPA, but that the board has some concerns and hopes that they will be addressed? will be addressed?
I would kind of go with the language that I have in there indicating that the commissioners have no specific objection, as Mrs. Blair has indicated with regard to the consistency rule, but nevertheless, you know, maybe in a side letter or something, but say nevertheless, we do have some concerns that were raised and that we hope will be addressed. Because I, this is a preliminary plan. It can be modified, it can be adjusted a little bit. So, I mean, we could add a side letter or indicate that we have some matters that although they don't rise to the level of what we would call an objection under the consistency review, but nevertheless are just that, concerns, some, some language along that line.
Okay, you mentioned that first, go along with what you had. What do you mean, what, what you had here in the resolution?
Well, I have some draft language there, again, which is what NOAACA is, is asking that we submit. If, and I think in there I, I indicate that it reflects that the county has no objection. If you would want to expand on that somewhere in that and say, although we have no objection to the consistency rule, we nevertheless have some matters which are concerning to us, and we would ask NOAACA and LORCO and EPA or whoever to consider those matters in the future, something like that.
Also, Ma'am Chair, I, our county engineer who serves as a sanitary engineer has presented a three-page document today with other questions, and this was just given to us this morning. I've not had a chance to really review this in depth. There are some technical questions here that I am not in a position to answer, but I think that they ought to be answered on behalf of the commissioners before we proceed with taking action.
Is that questions that we would be concerned about or NOAACA? Maybe those questions should be forwarded to NOAACA.
Commissioner questions?
He is our sanitary engineer, and this document was prepared at his request.
But what concerns, excuse me, but what concerns me is what Jerry keeps saying, that we really have no authority over LORCO.
I appreciate what Jerry said, but I also appreciate the fact that we have a agreement with LORCO, and I don't think, and I say this tongue-in-cheek, I don't just think that we can pass our questions up to NOAACA and expect them to resolve them on our behalf. Since I'm serving as President of NOAACA this year, I'm acutely aware of, of some of the issues that they deal with, and they will facilitate and help us in any way that we request. But I don't think that we can just tell them that they have to make a decision if, in fact, we're not willing to list what our concerns are.
Well, I think they have to base their decision, they're going to be requesting the funding, they have to base their decision on their findings, and that should be something that they should really look into, because they're going to make the decision whether or not LORCO gets the funding, or applies for it, or whatever decision they're, they're asked to make, but it should be based on this question, the questions that are there. I think it's up to them, they're going to make that final decision. I keep hearing Jerry say that we have no part of this, so...
Well, I, I don't want to go that far, Commissioner.
Well, let me know where we're at.
I mean, I want to, I want to express that I don't believe we have a veto over this. Our part is to help get NOAACA and eventually EPA some information. And if we have concerns, I think we should use this as the initial stage to express those I think from the tone of the commissioners, from what they've heard today, there, there are some matters that have been raised that do concern the commissioners. It doesn't sound to me like you want to go as far as saying that has caused us to believe that this is a plan that should stop, or that you somehow, I'm not getting from you that you want to put a roadblock. You just want to express the concerns that have been raised here. So I'm suggesting that maybe we tweak the language a little bit there, and say that although we have no formal objection under our agreement, we nevertheless do have some concerns. I agree with Commissioner Blair, we should not be trying to just pass the ball on. You know, maybe we need to look at the engineers' comments and try to incorporate, incorporate that into whatever lists of concerns that you may have.
Well, that's what I thought we were planning on doing, is to send them a list of our concerns, and then they would review these concerns, or are we expected to review?
Well, I'm just saying, as opposed to just passing the engineers' letter on to them and say, here, you look at this, I agree, we, we should do some evaluation of the...
Yeah, LORCO doesn't even know what we're looking at either. They've never seen these three pages of 14 questions, and I think our sanitary engineer needs to sit down and have LORCO answer these, because these were the concerns coming from, what was it, KM, K E McCartney? So we, you know, you don't have a copy of it, so how can, you know, we get them this morning, and now we're supposed to, you know, well, I don't know, I don't know. I just think, why is there such a rush, Jim? Why does it have to be done in March 14th? Could you answer that one?
I believe it's an environmental committee that's scheduled to meet on the 19th of March, and they set their agenda on the 12th. And if that meeting, that has to be done, it has to be reviewed by the environmental committee before the full board can accept it, which won't be until their meeting, their regular meeting, second Friday in April. So if we don't make the environmental committee meeting, then there's either got to be some special committee meeting at some point, or another delay until the next regularly scheduled environmental committee meeting, as I understand NOAACA's process.
And on your behalf, and you can say this clearer than I can, is that this was thrown as a curveball to LORCO also, this resolution.
Well, it's, it's a bit of a surprise to us, because the county sanitary engineer sits on our board, voted to, along with the rest of the board, to proceed back last summer. I don't have the dates in front of me right now, but we considered this, I reported to the executive committee in May, and I believe it was in July, that the full board voted to tell the engineer to proceed with developing this preliminary plan, and, and Mr. Carney sat on our board and voted in favor of both of those actions. And if he had concerns about this, I recognize he didn't have a copy of the detailed plan, the same as you have, until last week, but he was aware of the scope of the plan, the number of homes that were involved, the, the cost figures that were involved, the revenue streams, the loan amounts, and so on. And this is, as you characterized it, Mr. Moore, the first time we've, are aware that he's got specific concerns. And I want to also comment that, that there's been a lot of great discussion here today, and there's issues been brought up that we are already aware of, but have every intention of addressing. And I think Jerry's very, very clearly characterized this whole situation, that there's some obvious issues that need to be addressed. We'll be more than happy to work in any way that's necessary to address these issues. But what's at issue today is just whether or not NOAACA can proceed with this consistency review and pass their information on to Ohio EPA.